... to order. We are... ... request, of course, of the governor, so this is a special session of Ilejas Laturra in Guam, then that's actually called then "to order." And I would like to ask the Majority Leader for some motions.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we adopt this agenda 2015 first special session dated today, July 30, 2015.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker?
Yes, you may continue.
And on a point of order, I move that we waive items two through five of this special session agenda and proceed to roll call.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered. Can the clerks please take roll call?
Senator Tom Ada.
President.
Senator Tony Ada.
Attorney General.
Senator Uggan. Senator Blas.
President.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
President.
Senator Espaldon.
President.
Senator McCready. Senator Morrison.
President.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Mr. President.
Senator Rispisho.
Here.
Senator Rodriguez.
Here.
Senator Siniklas.
President.
Senator Torres. Senator Underwood. Speaker Wampat.
Can I go?
Madam Speaker, there is form.
Thank you very much. Mr. Majority Leader?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we excuse our colleagues that are not present for today's special session.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered. And then other waivers?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we waive items seven, which is call for the approval of the legislative journal, as well as item eight, communications and petitions.
Okay. On that motion, here are no objections, so ordered.
And on item ten, there is a message from Imagalay in Guam specific to this call to the first special session, and I move that the governor's message be appended as a special session journal.
Okay. Hearing objections, so ordered.
And Madam Speaker and colleagues, I move that we go ahead and waive items ten, eleven...
Ten, eleven, and...
And maybe twelve. I'll just, we'll have to have this entered into the record.
Okay. So on that motion and hearing objections, so ordered.
And on item twelve, Madam Speaker and colleagues, I move that Bill one dash one dash S, introduced by the Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign and Microeconomic Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform and Capital District by the request of Imagalay in Guam, the Governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam, an act to amend subsections A, B, and J of subsections fifteen, twelve point three of Article Five, Chapter One, Title V, GCA, relative to authorizing the refunding of government of Guam general obligation bonds, 2007 Series A, and government of Guam general obligation bonds, 2009 Series A, and related matters, including the application of savings to be achieved. Therefore, I move that this bill that's been introduced on behalf of the governor be given its first reading.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
And under motions, Madam Speaker, I move then that this Bill one dash one dash S be placed in the second reading file.
Mr. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I'm not sure whether it's a point of information or an objection, but I've been reading our legis, our, the statutes, two GCA, as it relates to legislative branch, and in section, chapter two, section twenty-one oh three, A, the title of the, the section is "Public Hearings Mandatory," and A reads, "No bill may be passed by Ilejas Latura unless it has received a public hearing, except that when the presiding officer of the legislature certifies that emergency conditions exist involving danger to the public health or safety. The requirement for a public hearing may be waived, and in the event the bill is identic, may be waived. And in the event the bill is identical to a bill introduced earlier, which later bill received a public hearing, then the public hearing for the identical bill may be waived." Madam Speaker, in also looking at the Organic Act, it, as, as to special sessions, there is nothing in there that waives or allows us to move forward with a bill that has not had a public hearing. I moved that, one, I object, and two, I move that we recess until there is sufficient time, five days hence, to have a public hearing, because I don't believe, Madam Speaker, that you can find that there emergency exists involving public, involving danger to the public health or safety. One, there is nothing in this bill that says there is a danger to the health, um, public safety. Number two, whether or not this was identical. I attended the hearing last week on Bill one thirty. The Bill one thirty that was heard was to change, was to consolidate and refund two government oper, government, general government oper, uh, obligation bonds, to a general obligation bond. The bill before us goes from general obligation to business privilege tax. That was not what was heard. So this is not identical. Also, the bill that's now before us is also infirmed because it contains a whole series of authorizations. Anybody who has taken a basic civics class knows that even authorizations require a public hearing before they can be approved. So the authorizations contained herein have not had a public hearing and cannot be passed. The sections on the bond are not identical to one thirty that was heard. One thirty that was heard was a general obligation to general obligation, not general obligation to business privilege tax, which is a whole different animal. The statute does not give any kind of exemption for a special session. There has to be a public hearing. I think we can be in recess for five days. There is no reason. We break for lunch. We can be in recess for five days, have the public hearing, and come back in and, and work on the bill at that point. I know that there's going to be say, "Well, we've never done this before." Well, the fact that it's bad practice, the fact that it's contrary to law, doesn't mean that we can continue to do it. Now that we know that it's against the law, or, and the law does not provide for it, we cannot continue to persist in a bad practice. A public hearing is mandatory, as the title says. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. I'm going to take a recess, and I will consult with legal counsel. The legislature's back in session. After the, I mean, during the recess, of course, I consulted with legal counsel and also pulled out copies of what's in two GCA legislative branch statute on specific section of two one zero three. Pulled out also the Organic Act, um, that also speaks to regular and special sessions, and I'm going to, to read specifically what's written, then I'll, then, of course, share my thoughts on, on this. Where in two GCA, sections twenty-one oh three, "Public Hearings Mandatory," and I know the Vice Speaker read it, but I think it's important that, you know, as part of my decision that I also, um, sorry. Can you hear me? Can you still hear me? No? Okay.
I'm not sure. I'm trying to...
Okay, so it's section two one zero three, "Public Hearings Mandatory." And it says, "No bill, senators, please." This is a very serious matter, and I think everybody needs to listen, because I've sat up here and I've seen many passionate discussions take place on the floor, and I don't see one hundred percent sometimes attention given to our colleagues, and this is definitely one that I think is very important to all of us here, and there, yes, repercussions maybe as a result of what we do from our actions, and the public, of course, will be the very first to, to criticize, you know, what we've done. And it says, "No bill may be passed by Ilejas Latura unless it has received a public hearing, except that when the presiding officer of Ilejas Latura certifies that emergency conditions exist involving danger to the public health or safety. The requirement for a public hearing may be waived, and in, in the event the bill is identical to a bill introduced earlier, which later bill, or the latter bill, received a public hearing, then a public hearing for the identical bill may be waived." So the first part of it is that most definitely, uh, there is, in this case, then, I can't certify that there is an emergency or any danger to the public's health or safety. The second part of this section speaks then to the, the bill being identical to the original, when I say identical, to the original Bill one thirty that was heard. And in the review of the bill, the biggest departure on I, on those bills and a substituted version that was accepted was that it was supposed to be, it went from a GO to a BBT. So that was the biggest departure that makes it then not the original bill. In the Organic Act, where the governor, of course, has the authority, where it says in section one four two three H, "Regular and Special Sessions." Regular sessions of the legislature shall be held annually, commencing on the second Monday in January, unless the legislature shall by law fix a different date, and shall continue for such term as the legislature may provide. The governor may call special sessions of the legislature at any time when, in his opinion, the public interest may require it. No legislation shall be considered at any special session, other than that specified in the call therefore, or in any special message by the governor to the legislature while in such session. All sessions of the legislature shall be open to the public. So the governor then has made the decision to call this legislature into special session, and in his message, the bill that he submitted was the second substituted version, and what was amended on the floor. So it does not even go back to the original bill that was heard, one thirty. And the fact that the governor has called this legislature into session, and the fact that we're here today, is that we've complied with the law, we've complied with the Organic Act to call a session. It does not say anywhere in terms of what the legislature, this can decide to do once we're in session. And there are several things, and you've seen that with special sessions, is that we can proceed with the bill, we can adjourn with the bill, we can amend, of course, a And in light of these documents that I've shared with everyone with you, of you, and in light, of course, of how, and the decision, rather, that I made early on in this term, when I said that I wasn't going to then waive any public hearing of any bill, because this legislature was highly criticized of that last term, and I wasn't about to go down that road this term. Is it difficult, of course, in my position up here, other than to render, you know, a decision? And my choice would be, but as you know, of course, is that, that's not my decision alone, and my choice is either to recess and have a public hearing, as required by law, or adjourn, and then immediately, as soon as the public hearing is conducted, that I would call us back into session to address exactly the governor's bill. So is it clear to everybody, basically, what my decision is? Senator Rispisho?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly am listening intently also to your position on this matter, and I recognize that you're in a very tough spot. And I think that there also could be a third option, and that third option could be to present the question to the body. You know, I've also been following, as you have, as well as other members of this legislature, the course of Bill one thirty and the whole idea to refinance these bonds to realize a potential two million dollar savings beginning September of this year. I listened to the whole discussion and the need for that, but I also pay close attention to what we do procedurally, always pay attention to what we do procedurally, and it appears that we're in a procedural gridlock, and the solution to resolve a procedural gridlock is to place the question before the body. In the things that you have just shared with us and your... In the things that you have just shared with us and your perspective is certainly valid, Madam Speaker, that you recognize the governor's Organic Act authority to call us into session, you recognize the presiding officer's authority to waive the public hearing if, in the event that the, there are circumstances that warrant it, or if it's an identical bill. But I also want you to recognize your not only authority but responsibility as presiding officer to ask what is the pleasure of the body and see what this body would like to do because in the whole genesis of this bill to refinance these bonds, it seems to me that there's a not only procedural disconnect, but it's lopsided because we've no longer recognized or respected the will of the body. If you recall how this idea was first brought to this legislature by way of an introduction of a bill, there was no public hearing on that bill. And then all of a sudden, there was a public hearing on a similar bill that was introduced and once that bill was substituted, once another member was successful in putting in an amendment that provided for earmarks and authorizations which ultimately would be subject to appropriation by the legislature, once that was adopted and once someone didn't like how that was going, then procedurally, that bill was withdrawn, which left us in a situation as a body that there was no more bill before us and there was a introduction of a similar bill and that, after that bill was introduced, you know, a request was made to you to waive the public hearing and that was denied as well. And so the governor has weighed in to say that he affirms and agrees with everything that the majority of this legislature is wanting to do by way of submitting a bill to the legislature. And now we're at a procedural gridlock where we're just gonna now say that we have to have a public hearing in this bill when the previous speaker who is objecting to my motion to place this bill on the second reading file has also eloquently articulated in another issue that we've never, ever, ever had a public hearing on bills that were brought to this body by way of the governor's introduction and by way of a special session. And so, Madam Speaker, this would certainly be unprecedented that the governor calls us into special session and then we're gonna have a public hearing on a bill that he's introduced and not recognizing that his Organic Act authority says he may call this legislature into session if he feels that it's the public's interest. And so I, I ask you, instead of limiting your options here to recessing and having a public hearing where there's no guarantee we'll have a public hearing on this particular issue, to adjourning, or I submit to you, maybe present the question to the body and ask if it's the will of the body on the motion I made to place the bill in the second reading file and once this bill is deliberated and if it goes to the third reading file, the, all the requirements that the previous speaker brought up, all those things will be cured if that bill receives a minimum of eight votes and the governor signs into law. But I submit that there is a public interest before us and that's to save the $2 million and wherever that money goes, that's for another argument, but I think the public interest right now, considering how cash strapped this government is, I submit that that alone is a public interest that requires the attention of this body and to do otherwise, especially to ignore the governor's call to special session would be in dereliction of our duties as members of this legislature. So I hope if you don't wanna make that decision, I hope then you submit that decision to the body and just let the will of the body decide how we're gonna proceed and how we're gonna resolve this procedural gridlock. But I thank you, Madam Speaker, and I certainly respect whatever decision you're gonna make. But I do hope that you involve us as you make that decision. Thank you.
Senator, I need to correct that there were times, yes, where this body has actually adjourned and that was at the time when Speaker Ben.
No, I know we've adjourned, but I don't think we've ever.
No, and then what Speaker Ben did was that he had a public hearing on the bill.
Yeah.
So that was actually done at one time as well. So it's not that it has never been done, it has been. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker. I just wanna echo the sentiments of our majority leader. And Madam Speaker, if we're, if we're gonna start to go down the path of whether precedence has been set, whether it's been done in the past, bill 130 that we, that we accepted, even the first substitution that we accepted on this body yesterday, Madam Speaker, already set the, already set the precedence. That first substitution of bill 130 was not the version that was held, that had a public hearing. The bill, that initial bill 130 that was held, that had a public hearing, used the general obligation bond to refund, to refinance the earlier bonds. And so when we first accepted it here in this body, it was to use the BPT bonds. So the presiding officer at that time has set precedence in that it allowed for discussion, it allowed for amendments to be made, all the way up to the point where we're ready to, to place it on third reading and vote on it and then it was pulled, it was pulled, the sponsor had pulled the legislation. And so if, if we're looking at what has been set, let's not look far, far back, we can just look at yesterday. What has been done already, it has been publicly debated. The concept, Madam Speaker, I think we have to be very clear and not kind of, it's kind of misleading our, our public because really the, the main concept of bill 130 or what we have before us today is to refinance, refund 2007, 2009 bonds into, into, you know, I won't even say it, into another bond so that we can realize savings. That 2 million realization savings is, is real, it's today, it's gonna happen this fiscal year and the future savings is what we're, what we've also included, or what the governor has included in this bill is for future, is for future use. And this whole thought and the notion of, well, how do we start spending money that we don't have? But that's, that's how budgeting works. You set a budget on, based on anticipation of revenue and that's what we're doing here, Madam Speaker. So I'm just asking and I'm pleading that if we can just move forward, I, I don't know what the, the pain will be if we move forward, authorize these, these refundings to happen and if there's such a big concern about getting the public's input and, and involving them, the public's hearing on this should have happened in January, it should have happened in April, Madam Speaker, but it didn't. There was a failure on the chairman's part of finance to have a public hearing on those bills. And so we're now here, you know, today, this afternoon, in, in trying to determine what to do. So I'm pleading with you, Madam Speaker, pleading with our colleagues to please do the work of the people and move this forward. Thank you very much.
Senators Sannikels.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would proffer that the only failure we have at this point is a failure to stay accurate to the facts. The reality is during the public hearing on bill 130, it was discussed as to whether or not we should consider having those bonds refunded as either general obligation bonds or business privilege tax bonds. So we did have that discussion and it would be consistent for us to substitute it on the floor relative to that discussion because it did have its time in the public hearing. What was not discussed at all in the public hearing, that is, the issue at hand today, are all of the authorizations to spend all of the savings without getting any public input whatsoever on where that money was going to be spent. Now, the argument is consistently being made that there are not appropriations, there are authorizations. But everybody on this floor knows that once we pre-commit that money, you can't introduce something that's going to break that commitment. So once we authorize it for all these items here in this bill, we can't go in there and appropriate it for something else because then someone's gonna point back and say, you can't appropriate it for vendor payments, you can't appropriate it for refunds, you can't appropriate it for textbooks, you can't appropriate it for roads because we already authorized it for all these other things. And that's why it's so important, Madam Speaker, for us to be very clear as to the accuracy of the facts that bring us to this point and why the testimony of the vice speaker with respect to the question of whether or not a public hearing was heard on this measure is accurate, which in fact it is, because the public hearing on bill 130 did in fact discuss the merits of general obligation bonds versus business privilege tax bonds, but what it did not discuss under any circumstance, nor was the public ever involved in, was the question of how we were going to go about authorizing the money or appropriating the money, or any other synonym of making a decision as to where that money was going to go. Our people need to be involved in that decision. We talked about how important these savings are, so important that we went into session yesterday and were called into special session today, these savings are so important and yet as important as they are, they're not important for us to bring before our people and include them in the process, whether it's authorization or appropriation? Madam Speaker, the way this bill is written, transmitted by the governor, is exactly the same bill that I withdrew after it was sub, further substituted and amended on the floor and this bill will authorize every single penny of the savings from day one. We don't have any more savings with respect to this bill, Madam Speaker, because it's already all authorized for other things. Now, whether or not these other things have merit, absolutely, we can discuss that, but certainly our people should be included in the discussion. I applaud you, Madam Speaker, for your resolve on this issue to have the public hearing and for your resolve on this issue for us to be more transparent, given the nightmare that transpired in November of last year at the close of the previous legislative term. You are right, our people are very upset about their lack of ability to participate and provide input. And if we think that our people are so narrow-minded as to not know the difference, or rather the similarities, between appropriations and authorizations and how they lock up the savings from this bond for the specific items that other people in this floor want to prioritize without the public's input, if they think the people don't know the difference, then you're making the same mistake that you made back in November. Now, I'm making it a very important part of my service this term, Madam Speaker, to constantly bring these things back to the attention of the people because the participation of our people is critical in a representative democracy. Our role is not to figure out how we can justify what it is that we want to do and hope that they accept it, our role is to involve them in what it is that we're doing, involve them as much as possible so that we are all on board with the priorities that we are, we are sharing and more importantly, the priorities that we are funding. So to move this measure forward without a public hearing, to authorize every single penny of these savings without involving the community in any way, is just as much a travesty to the process of involving our people as what happened back in November of last year. So we don't need to go this route, Madam Speaker, we can simply go through the same process that the, that the vice speaker is, is recommending and that process is for us to have a public hearing on this measure.
Personal privilege, Madam Speaker. There were some of us that were not in this body in November and I don't think that, I think this is, keep the, the, the conversation, the discussion, Jermaine.
Your point is well taken.
Thank you.
Oh, Madam Speaker, I'll, I'll qualify that statement that, in fact, yes, that is correct, some of the members of the body were not here during that time. I would acknowledge that. But we can all learn from history and not repeat that same mistake, whether we were here or not. And we all should really reflect on whether or not we think it was a mistake whether we were here or not because involving our people is important at all, at all levels of this government. So, Madam Speaker, I would agree with the vice speaker, I would agree with your assessment and I would agree that, you know, this, this bill is not the same thing that had a public hearing because there are key elements in it that were not at any time during the public hearing of the original bill 130 ever discussed with our community. So what are we afraid of? I don't get it, you know? I mean, the original bill 130 would have just resulted in the savings, we could have done all these appropriations as separate measures and had public hearings on all of these separate measures and I don't understand why there is so much resistance to us going that route. Why doesn't, why do you not want to have a public hearing on how these savings are spent? Why do you not want to have a public hearing on how these savings are authorized, if you wanna use that term instead? They're not necessarily bad things, Madam Speaker, and we would probably be surprised as to what our people will come in and testify in favor for, in favor for or against. I'm not saying let's not do it, I don't want that to in any way be interpreted like that, but what I am saying is let's get all the facts, let's get all the information, let's have the hearing, let's involve the people, let's get the experts in, let's get the hard numbers, those will be nice, for all these project expenditures, let's get the estimates, the three quotes. For all the overtime payments that are due, let's get the certified timesheets, make sure that those are the exact amounts. I've always been in favor of paying those things, Madam Speaker, every single time, if it's what we owe our people, then absolutely. But before we go authorizing money that we don't even know we have yet, without involving our people, let's go through that process. That's all anybody is saying here and I don't understand why that is so problematic. And you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a little disappointed because when I withdrew the bill yesterday, I sent a letter to the governor and I asked him to call us into special session and I sent him a copy of my bill and I said, here's a copy of my bill and I'm asking you to please consider calling us into special session using this avenue. We can go into session and appropriate the monies afterwards, but let's just approach it cleanly and do the savings. And unfortunately, the governor has instead decided to move forward the very same bill that I withdrew, despite the fact that we did not have the public hearing on these authorizations. And so, you know, I really hope, Madam Speaker, that however you rule, you, you weigh very carefully, a very valuable lesson that we were all reminded of, though some of us were not here, that happened in the previous term. And, and let's involve our people in the process and that's, that's all any of us here on this floor are saying, not a single person on this floor has said that these things are bad things, but all of us, I think, can, can come to terms with the idea that perhaps there are also other things that we should be considering as well of these monies. So let's involve our people and, and move forward from there. It doesn't need to be as contentious as this, we could have easily passed my bill yesterday and everyone could have introduced their appropriations today, you know? But if, if going this route is what some people insist on, then I'm going to insist on being very transparent to our people and explaining to them the difference between the bill that was heard, the bill that was substituted and why this measure and the measure that was withdrawn did not have a public hearing and how clear that must be, must be made because the people were never, ever informed that all of these savings were already going to be spoken for in this legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Anybody else who would like to be heard? Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, first of all, based on a lot of the activities that transpired yesterday and all for naught in terms of discussing a previous legislation and then eventually having that taken off the docket, the governor had to step forward and say, this is a critical issue that would ultimately benefit our community. If we wanna go to the Organic Act, Madam Speaker, it says, public interest. If you wanna take that a little further as it applies to the legislation before us, the saving $2 million on, in the first week of September constitute public interest? Absolutely, if those funds are gonna be allocated to address operational and requirements of this government. Now, the saving $48 million over the term of the refinancing bond constitute public interest, then I don't know if, if the decision is ultimately that this doesn't constitute public interest, then I'm gonna have to stand by this legislation and say, yes, saving the people of Guam $48 million over the life of a refinanced bond is public interest. But you know, Madam Speaker, there's been some statements made about the allocation of the anticipated savings of $2 million. You know, when we take out a mortgage, Madam Speaker, and we want to refinance that mortgage, we already have funds set aside and budgeted for our monthly payment. You have that opportunity to go and refinance that mortgage, then guess what? You can delay possibly a payment for your first payment on the refinanced mortgage by maybe a month or two down the road. And then what do you do? You take those additional revenues and you allocate them and spend them according to what you think is necessary. That's a spending plan, Madam Speaker, that's what this authorization provided, is an anticipated spending plan that a majority of senators in this body endorsed so that once that $2 million is realized, which is cash in the bank, that otherwise would have been used to pay off the obligation in September, but because of the refinancing option, Madam Speaker. Speaker, GIDEA reps have said we could realize $2 million. So a spending plan, an authorization to expend those $2 million to benefit our people and our community, was put forward, was accepted by this body. And the governor decided that he was willing to accept that spending plan proposal until such time that an appropriation measure is passed by this body that would prioritize those items. It's a spending plan, Madam Speaker, if there's a request, a sense of urgency either from GMH or Department of Education, that that $2 million is needed elsewhere, and that he will work on identifying financial resources so that he can take care of some of those items in the spending plan, perhaps a few months down the road, then that ultimately is the policy that this body has to decide on. How do we address that, and do we rediverge and change the prioritization of the use of those funds? Spending plan, Madam Speaker, if we understand budget, the authorization is very similar to a spending plan. Some of us are taking it a step further and saying, "It's a commitment." Yes, it's a commitment, if in fact, the $2 million is realized, but if there's a more urgent need in this government, I'm sure that members of this body will step forward and endorse the reallocation of those proceeds, should that be identified. But in the meantime, this is how we anticipate to spend those savings. And, Madam Speaker, this idea about not wanting to involve our people, even the amendment says that, based on the authorization and the spending plan proposal of the anticipated savings of $2 million, even the amendment stipulated that in fact, it's subject to appropriation by the legislature. So when a legislative proposal is introduced, what does it, what process does it go through, Madam Speaker? It goes through the committee on appropriation, he rightfully, as a chairman, would have a public hearing, and then this body would ultimately decide whether in fact, that's how those resources are going to be expended. That is the public hearing process. So, this idea that our people, that we're trying to pull a fast one on our people, our people understand the process, and if you look at the fine print, it says, "Subject to appropriation by this body." An appropriation measure still has to go through the committee on appropriation, and still has to be adopted by this body. But you know, Madam Speaker, let me say this much, if it's such a heartache to present an authorization that itemizes that we're going to take care of $186,000 of unanticipated expenditures of this government, because not only our first responders, but our public employees sacrificed their time doing Typhoon Halong, and spend their time at the emergency operations center, so that they can coordinate all the activities of the government, the private sector, and they incurred overtime, and it still has not been paid, if that is not an operational obligation and a priority, I think we should definitely address that. And that's a figure that originated directly from Homeland Security. These recent typhoons, Madam Speaker, when they were prepping up, and I'm telling you, a lot of our people went out of their way, but they were hesitant about, some of them were hesitant about going to the emergency operations center, because they were concerned that they had yet to receive the compensation from Halong. But guess what they did? They were all professionals and committed to this community, that they all went up to the emergency operations center, they went to their assigned jurisdictions, and they carried out the intent of what the responsibility was, and that is to safeguard the interests of our community during Typhoon Dolphin. That's another allocation in here, Madam Speaker, that we have an obligation to pay. Another one is, you're looking at the Yumadec Bridge. Okay, I understand, now, if we want to consider that and say, "Okay, Mayor of Yumadec," which that request originated from, it came from the mayor of Yumadec, who represents the people of his village, and he asked, "Can this body help us identify $273,000 so that we can repair the Yumadec Bridge Tower and ensure the safety of every single vehicle and every single citizen that's driving underneath that bridge?" That ultimately, again, is another policy decision that we would have to make. And there are other concerns here, Madam Speaker, the mayor of Sina Hanya was very aggressive in working collaboratively with Gura, and identified in excess of half a million dollars to be able to work on conservative community projects. And he said that he's in need of an additional $150,000, so that he can realize savings by allowing the primary contractor working on those projects to be able to take care of some of the other requirements with the same contract. He also committed all of his limited gaming funds for fiscal year 13, 14, and 15, and the subsequent fiscal years to maintain those facilities. Madam Speaker, our mayors are doing their best, but every now and then, they just need to reach out and ask members of this body, not one senator, because once a request is made and is presented to this body, it becomes an issue and a policy that 15 members here have to ultimately make. After Typhoon Dolphin, what was the most prevalent issue, in addition to what the executive branch members and the governor were doing in addressing some of the housing needs of our people, what was one of the more pressing issues that came repeatedly to many of our offices? That's our farmers, Madam Speaker, they were asking for a hand up, so that they can go back out there and till the soil again, and regenerate and plant again, so that they can contribute to our local economy. They were asking for a hand up, not a handout, and the time to give those handouts was exactly immediately after the emergency, so that they can get right back out there and till that soil, and be able to provide for not only their families, but the entire island community. There are other funding mechanisms here, Madam Speaker, that the authorization slash, yes, I'm calling it a spending plan, would have been able to address. But you know, Madam Speaker, if this is such a heartache, addressing needs of our community, which is our job, to listen to our people, understand that there are obligations being incurred because of an unanticipated storm called Halong, because of an unanticipated storm called Dolphin, and these are obligations, if this is a heartache in anticipating the savings and saying, "We're going to take care of applying some of those funds and address our obligations, so that our people can be, their requirements can be addressed," then, Madam Speaker, if subsection 2 is such a heartache, then why don't we discuss this? And I will be willing, if it's so much of a heartache, to remove that section, so that we can move forward with this initiative, Madam Speaker, because the one underlying question is, yes, legislation should have their public hearing. Yes, in this case, we are at the 11th hour. The question is, if we go through that public hearing process, will that be sufficient time for GIDEA to still very aggressively go out into the market, realize the savings, and refinance the bond before the next payment is due? Otherwise, there will be no savings. So, Madam Speaker, I stand here saying that if Section Subitem 2, the authorization, and I hope my colleagues who co-sponsored this amendment yesterday are not upset, I would be more than willing to remove that section, but I can certainly make this commitment, that I will continue to work on trying to identify funds with a number of our colleagues in here, to address these existing obligations and community projects. We owe it to our people, Madam Speaker, and this idea that in fact, this list was just made up, guess what? This list was made up from requests, from mayors, from our people, who are owed these obligations, and that's our job. That is exactly what our job is in this legislative hall, at least my understanding, is to take care and to address the needs of our community, and it's highlighted in here. So, Madam Speaker, should this legislation proceed, and should it continue to be a heartache to a few people in this room, then I will be more than willing to withdraw that amendment or that subitem, that authorization slash spending list, so that we can proceed and allow the governor to go out into the bond market, refinance the bonds for 2007, 2009, realize some savings for our community, and then ultimately, it's going to be our job to identify where we want to reallocate those resources. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. So, Senator, you canceled? Okay. After listening, of course, and to everyone's argument and concerns, and pleas and all that, and this is, of course, not an easy, you know, decision to make, and every decision we make, there's always repercussions, there's a cause, and then there'll be effect, and I know that very well. I can only go on the basis, of course, of what's in the law. I can always also go on the basis of any mistakes made in the past and brought to my attention, to eventually change, and then make it work from there on. That's the only way I'm able to operate, and it may not be always the best thing that, you know, everyone would like. And I'm going to state my reasons for my decision, and it's always going to be based on the facts of what is before me. One, is that this is not an emergency. Two, it does not endanger the public health and safety. Three, there's a requirement for a public hearing that I will not waive. Four, I've listened to our people, and they've demanded that we should always be open, and that we should always have a public hearing. Whether one or no one shows up, is there's a compliance of the law. Five, I believe that with compliance with the organic act, in which today, a special session was called at 2:30. Therefore, with a commitment...
Point of order, Madam Speaker, sorry, can I just request for a quick recess before you make your ruling?
Wait, but you said, "Point of order," what did I do wrong in the standing rule that you're asking?
No, you did nothing wrong, ma'am. In my eyes, you didn't do anything wrong, but I'm just asking your indulgence for a brief recess before you make your ruling. We've heard from the previous speaker say that he was open to taking out the authorization, and if that's really what's preventing us from going forward, maybe we can explore that as an option, so we can get this bill passed, so that GIDEA can do its job, so that these savings can...
But all those, whatever it is, it's contrary to everything that I've just listed.
But it won't be, because if...
That is not an emergency, does not endanger the public health and safety. There was no public hearing, and this is the governor's bill, and we must address the governor's bill itself, otherwise, kill it or pass it, adjourn, you know, have a public hearing, those are the only options.
No, I believe the governor's bill can be amended, he always has the right to sign or veto it, I don't think it's in total that we have to accept and pass...
But you didn't let me finish everything.
I know, that's why I was asking for a recess.
But I'd like to be able to make some commitments here as well.
But don't give a ruling yet.
So you haven't even heard.
But don't give a ruling yet, I'm asking for a recess.
One minute recess, I mean, one minute. And rather than reiterating everything that I have said earlier, is that what I was going to request is that, um, that the Majority Leader, of course, would motion for an adjournment, and actually set a specific session date, rather than subject to the call of the speaker, to have then a public hearing, giving it's five days to be heard, and its sixth day, which is August 7th, to call everyone back into session then to address, you see, the bill. That was my original, um, decision, my ruling. However, during the recess, based on some of the arguments that other members were saying that they were willing to work with, but the thing is, is that we can only deal with this bill that the governor had submitted, and as the presiding officer, I would not be able to, on those four citations that I've made, for me then to, to waive, and to accept, and to proceed with this bill. So, Mr. Majority Leader.
Well, Madam Speaker, given your ruling, and unfortunately, the option I suggested where you placed the question before the body is not possible at this time, I move that we adjourn this special session, Sinadai. And I cannot make a motion to adjourn to a time specific, because right now, we're in a special session, so it'd have to be up to you as Speaker to call us back into session. But I want to say, before you addressed my motion that we adjourn Sinadai, that there was a proposal, that if both sides recognized that some concessions could be made. More importantly, the biggest concession is that the Section 4 regarding the authorization, Madam Speaker, both senators and movers of this section were willing to forego this at this time, and then take that up at a later time. And the other two senators on the other side of the issue that objected to that authorization or earmark, was willing to move the bill forward. So each side was willing to give up something. I still present that to you as an option, because I think that that offer may expire. If you accept the motion to adjourn Sinadai, and we would never be able to focus on why we were called into the special session, and more so, why the sponsor of Bill 130 requested you to have this session in the first place. I think the deadline, or supposed deadline by GITA, was to try to get the authorization today, and every day that moves forward is a day, is a missed opportunity to move forward on the bond refinancing. So I ask you to reconsider, and the other option could be just to put my motion to place this bill on the top of the second reading file, then I'll make the amendment to remove Section 4, and I don't believe there'll be any more amendments after that, Madam Speaker, and, and then we go to the voting file, and we just, it's a lesson learned, and we call it a day, but the, but we can look forward to the opportunity of saving potentially $40 million over the course of this. So I, I make this motion with reservations, and presenting to you and to the body that there is, there is a way out with this particular gridlock. And I hope that you would consider that, and allow this bill to go into the second reading file. But if your decision stands, then we have no other recourse but then to adjourn this special session, Sinadai.
Thank you very much, Senator Esposito. I have to say that, you know, I admire, of course, your tenacity and your willingness to always work on both sides of the aisles to, to find, you know, a compromise, and, you know, the art of politics is compromise. However, what makes it very difficult, you see, when you're working with the law, I mean, the bill down there, on the floor, compromises can be made. What cannot be compromised, however, is the law that's very straightforward, and that's the part in which, of course...
Can I do a point of personal privilege? With all due respect, I'm not suggesting that we compromise the law.
No, I...
The law gives you the discretion, as presiding officer, to make for this legislative process to proceed. I, I've also taken the position, Madam Speaker, that we don't ever want to prevent this legislature from meeting on the matters that have to be addressed, that are of public interest, and this issue is of public interest. So if it will make you feel more comfortable, Madam Speaker, you wouldn't be circumventing any law, because the law provides that discretionary authority to you, and as I suggested, you can lean to this body for that guidance, and, and that's basically how we can move forward.
Thank you.
Madam Speaker, before, can I, I don't want to rise on a, maybe, point of information, or if that's correct, I want to ask a question. I know that the senator, the Majority Leader, has offered some compromise, right, on how we can move this forward, but, you know, the ultimate is that we're going to have to adjourn. Before that decision is made, I just want to, again, plead with you, a big concession has been made, um, here, um, in this floor, prior to us coming back on session, that two components that have been contentious are willing to be taken out, so that we can move this process forward. I think also, I think we also have to be very cautious, is that we're saying we're going to adjourn, and then we're going to come back in five days, have a, a public hearing, come back and have session. It's really contrary to why, you know, with all due respect, you as a Speaker called us into session yesterday. You received, you're in receipt of a letter from Senator Sinicolas, saying that, um, there is an urgent need to address his bill by July 30th, and so you agreed, and you called us into session, and we were here, we did our work. Eventually, it didn't turn out the way it should be, so we're here today. So I just, you know, want to just state that again, uh, for the record, and, again, be able to plead with you, um, that already concessions have been made, that components of this measure would be removed, and that we move forward to realize the savings. GITA goes out, and they need this done today. So I'm asking, I'm pleading again with you, Madam Speaker, if you can please consider that again. Thank you.
You're welcome. Senators Sinicolas, hopefully this is it, guys.
Thank, thank you, Madam Speaker. I too, um, I would like to rise to also a, a point of information. Um, I, I, I think what we have here is a, um, a, a challenge of interpretation, and I first want to say, Madam Speaker, that your, um, your fortitude in holding fast to the interpretations of the law is, is the right thing to do, absolutely. Um, the governor's bill that he transmitted for us for this special session does include elements that did not have a public hearing. Those elements were the authorizations for expenditure. Um, the issue of whether or not, uh, the question of it being a business privileged tax bond, uh, measure, or a general obligation bond measure, whether or not that had a public hearing, I, I am the author of the legislation, and I was the presiding officer of the, of the legislation. And, um, as with any time that we have a bill, Madam Speaker, the, um, the main points of it could in fact, um, change based on the testimony that we receive in the public hearing. So while we did not have a hearing on the authorizations for expenditure, we did have a hearing on the, um, the debt itself, and so...
Yes.
You addressed the majority here, and I'm just trying to work...
I, I know exactly.
And I'm asking, based on the motion to adjourn, um, there was, there was a request, not of the merit of the case, but of the merit of moving forward, according to what has been listed, I guess...
The legislature is back in session. And rather than reiterating everything that I have said earlier, is that what I was going to request is that that the Majority Leader, of course, would motion for an adjournment and actually set a specific session date rather than subject to the call of the Speaker to have then a public hearing, giving its five days to be heard and its sixth day, which is August 7th, to call everyone back into session then to address, you see, the bill. That was my original decision, my ruling. However, during the recess, based on some of the arguments that other members were saying that they were willing to work with, but the thing is, is that we can only deal with this bill that the Governor had submitted. And as the Presiding Officer, I would not be able to, on those four citations that I've made, for me then to waive and to accept and to proceed with this bill. So, Mr. Majority Leader.
Well, Madam Speaker, given your ruling, and unfortunately, the option I suggested where you placed the question before the body is not possible at this time. I move that we adjourn this special session, synodize. And I cannot make a motion to adjourn to a time specific because right now we're in a special session. So it'd have to be up to you as Speaker to call us back into session. But I want to say before you addressed my motion that we adjourn synodize, that there was a proposal that if both sides recognized that some concessions could be made. More importantly, the biggest concession is that the Section 4 regarding the authorization, Madam Speaker, both Senators and movers of this section were willing to forego this at this time and then take that up at a later time. And the other two Senators on the other side of the issue that objected to that authorization or earmark was willing to move the bill forward. So each side was willing to give up something. I still present that to you as an option because I think that that offer may expire. If you accept the motion to adjourn synodize, and we would never be able to focus on why we were called into the special session and more so, why the sponsor of Bill 130 requested you to have this session in the first place. I think the deadline, or supposed deadline by Gita, was to try to get the authorization today. And every day that moves forward is a day, is a missed opportunity to move forward on the bond refinancing. So I ask you to reconsider. And the other option could be just to put my motion to place this bill on the top of the second reading file. Then I'll make the amendment to remove Section 4. And I don't believe there will be any more amendments after that, Madam Speaker. And then we go to the voting file and we just, it's a lesson learned and we call it a day. But we can look forward to the opportunity of saving potentially $40 million over the course of this. So I make this motion with reservations and presenting to you and to the body that there is a way out with this particular gridlock. And I hope that you would consider that and allow this bill to go into the second reading file. But if your decision stands, then we have no other recourse but then to adjourn this special session, synodize.
Thank you very much, Senator Esposito. I have to say that, you know, I admire, of course, your tenacity and your willingness to always work on both sides of the aisles to find, you know, a compromise. And, you know, the art of politics is compromise. However, what makes it very difficult, you see, when you're working with the law, I mean, the bill down there on the floor, compromises can be made. What cannot be compromised, however, is the law that's very straightforward. And that's the part in which, of course...
Can I do a point of personal privilege? With all due respect, I'm not suggesting that we compromise the law. The law gives you the discretion as Presiding Officer to make for this legislative process to proceed. I've also taken the position, Madam Speaker, that we don't ever want to prevent this legislature from meeting on the matters that have to be addressed that are of public interest. And this issue is of public interest. So if it will make you feel more comfortable, Madam Speaker, you wouldn't be circumventing any law because the law provides that discretionary authority to you. And as I suggested, you can lean to this body for that guidance. And that's basically how we can move forward.
Thank you.
Madam Speaker, before, can I, I don't want to rise on a maybe point of information? Or if that's correct, I want to ask a question. I know that the Senator, the Majority Leader, has offered some compromise, right? On how we can move this forward. But, you know, the ultimate is that we're going to have to adjourn. Before that decision is made, I just want to, again, plead with you. A big concession has been made here in this floor prior to us coming back on session that two components that have been contentious are willing to be taken out so that we can move this process forward. I think also, I think we also have to be very cautious is that we're saying we're going to adjourn and then we're going to come back in five days, have a public hearing, come back and have session. It's really contrary to why, you know, with all due respect, you as a Speaker called us into session yesterday. You received, you're in receipt of a letter from Senator Nicholas saying that there is an urgent need to address his bill by July 30th. And so you agreed and you called us into session and we were here, we did our work. Eventually, it didn't turn out the way it should be. So we're here today. So I just, you know, want to just state that again for the record. And again, be able to plead with you that already concessions have been made, that components of this measure would be removed and that we move forward to realize the savings. Gita goes out and they need this done today. So I'm asking, I'm pleading again with you, Madam Speaker, if you can please consider that again. Thank you.
You're welcome. Senators Nicholas, hopefully this is it, guys.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too, I would like to rise to also a point of information. I think what we have here is a challenge of interpretation. And I first want to say, Madam Speaker, that your fortitude in holding fast to the interpretations of the law is the right thing to do, absolutely. The Governor's bill that he transmitted for us for this special session does include elements that did not have a public hearing. Those elements were the authorizations for expenditure. The issue of whether or not, the question of it being a business privileged tax bond measure or a general obligation bond measure, whether or not that had a public hearing. I am the author of the legislation and I was the Presiding Officer of the legislation. And as with any time that we have a bill, Madam Speaker, the main points of it could in fact change based on the testimony that we receive in the public hearing. So while we did not have a hearing on the authorizations for expenditure, we did have a hearing on the debt itself. And so...
Yes. I, I know exactly. And I'm asking, based on the motion to adjourn, there was, there was a request, not of the merits of the case, but of the merits of moving forward. According to what has been listed, I guess, based on our interpretation of the rules, is motions to adjourn is not available. You cannot interrupt the Speaker. And I guess, I should have a point of information. It requires a second and all we need is a simple majority to either vote to adjourn or not. If I, if this is not the case, then let the legal counsel tell us. Because you've already rendered a decision, there hasn't been a plea. Now talk about the merits of the case. Talk about, are we going to adjourn or not?
And Madam Speaker, I am, I am bringing information that may help us to consider whether or not adjournment is proper at this time. And I really, I really would like for us to weigh the circumstances that we may not necessarily need to adjourn. And that was what, that was some of the information that I was trying to share.
The legislature is back in session. Mr. Majority Leader, on your motion, then, as much as you didn't want to proffer that emotion, but the motion then is to adjourn synodize. And there is an objection, so. All in favor to adjourn synodize, please raise your hand. There's an objection to adjourn. So all then in favor to adjourn, please raise your hand. One, two, three. So the motion then fails. So we're now to the objection, of course, to the Vice Speaker's objection. For 1 S. Right, that's what you... When the Vice Speaker objected, of course, for the placement of 1 dash S on the agenda, then I made my ruling, and my ruling still stands. So therefore, we're nowhere. I mean, we really are nowhere.
I could, Madam Speaker. If that ruling is still standing now, I'd like to, if I may, if I can be corrected, to move that we reconsider your decision and that we move forward with discussion on this bill before us.
Senator, I don't believe that there's anything in the standing rule, basically, that when it comes to the Presiding Officer by law making that decision, that you can overrule that decision.
Madam Speaker, point of information.
Yes.
Or maybe, maybe for clarification with a legal counsel. How can you unilaterally rule on a motion such as that?
I just, no, I didn't just do unilaterally.
There wasn't, the motion was, he proffered the motion. There was no discussion on the motion.
Which one, which motion?
He objected to the, right? He objected to the motion to move it.
Mr. Vice Speaker, can you clarify?
Yes, I objected to the, to placing this bill on the agenda because by statute, it's prohibited.
And in this objection, you acknowledged the objection. And I think that procedurally, it's for the body to decide as to whether or not we're going to...
No, because the law is very clear that is the Presiding Officer will make that determination based on any bill that will be passed by this body would have to meet those conditions. And earlier I had indicated, you know, those reasons that they did not. So therefore, my ruling was that it would not be...
See, your ruling was not based on his objection. Your ruling was based on, he just, I saw that, he just brought up his objection. I just need to make this very clear. Your ruling wasn't as a result of this objection, then?
No, it's not necessarily based...
I just need to be very clear because I don't see that, I'm very concerned.
I said it was either objection or a point of information and advised the Chair, the Presiding Officer, that she could not find a danger to the health or to public safety. There was not an identical bill. And so therefore, Presiding Officer could not waive a hearing on the bill. As a consequence, the bill cannot go down to second, to third reading for discussion because it cannot be passed.
So that appears to, based on that, then your ruling was based on a point of information?
Yes.
Okay.
My question, Madam Speaker, is that since you made a ruling, and I believe the law gives you the discretion to make the ruling. And so my, my question now is that if it's proper, I would like to make a motion to reconsider or to overrule, notwithstanding, if I need to have a notwithstanding, to overrule the decision of the Chair.
Mr. Vice Speaker?
Madam Speaker, point of information, there, it is not discretionary on the, on the Presiding Officer. The Presiding Officer certifies that an emergency exists involving danger to the public health or safety. There is none of those two. Or that you can have a waiver if the bill is identical. And there's no way you can find that this is identical to the bill that was heard, 130, with the appropriations in Section 4 and the change from GO to BPT. So the statute's clear, you can't, there is, it is not discretionary. It's mandatory that there has to be a public hearing and there was no public hearing. I offered that we have recess so there could be a public hearing. It's not an issue of whether or not you can substitute. A substitution can be made by the Chair. But this is Bill 1 S. And this morning, Bill 148 could also not be considered as one that could be waived because it is not 130. The Chair of Finance could substitute 130. But 148 this morning was not identical, identical. It says in the statute twice, was not identical to 1, the 130 that was heard. Not the 130 that was debated. It's not an issue whether or not we spent six hours yesterday debating it. It's whether or not there was a public hearing. Not a floor debate, a public hearing of an identical bill.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Point of order, Madam Speaker?
What's your point of order?
Yeah, this time I really rise to a point of order because there are a lot of references made to statute. And the determination of whether or not this bill is in the public interest has been referenced by local statute. But the Organic Act clearly points out that, and you said this too, Madam Speaker, that the Governor may call special sessions of the legislature at any time when, in his opinion, the public interest may require it. So by the Governor calling us into special session, determine that this is of the public interest. And I think this is what should guide your ruling as to allowing the bill to move forward. The Organic Act provides this power for the Governor. He called us into special session because he believes that this is of the public interest. You're being guided by local statute that asks you as Presiding Officer to determine whether or not this bill is in the public interest. There's two things to waive the public hearing requirement. One is if it's in the public interest, or two, if it's an identical bill. The issue of public interest has been resolved, in this case, by the Governor through his Organic Act authority. And so I think that alone really allows you and allows us to recognize the Governor's Organic Act authority in this case. And the bill, given what I just read, should be qualified to be placed on the second reading file.
Mr. Vice Speaker?
Madam Speaker, a point of information. There is nothing in the Organic Act section that was cited that states that a public hearing can be waived. And in the public, in that section, it says that the legislature shall continue for such term as the legislature may provide. So we can, it's understood that the legislature could do whatever it wants as it's in statute. And we did pass Chapter 2, which says, no bill shall be passed by the legislature without a public hearing unless three things can be shown, either danger to the public, public safety, or health, or identical bill. If you can find any of those three, fine. I may be looking only with one eye, but I can't see it.
Senator Blash, you were wanting to say something earlier? My ruling still stands. I'm expecting a motion from the Majority Leader. No, out of, yes, out of order. So Senator...
Is that, is out of order?
Senator Esposito.
Madam Speaker?
Yes.
Before I actually raise my point of information and stuff, I'd like to be able to consult with legal counsel. Can you give us a little bit of a recess, please?
Okay, I'll take another recess.
I understand that we don't have a quorum, but we're not by statute, we can't deliberate after ten o'clock at night. It is now quarter to nine and we don't have enough people here. I'll recess until nine o'clock tomorrow morning.